Right, evening everyone. Welcome to the January meeting of the Chelmsford City Council Cabinet. For the purposes of those looking on the recording, I'm Stephen Robinson, the leader of the City Council and the Chair of the Cabinet. Before the official agenda, the usual announcements. If the fire bell rings, please make your way out to the War Memorial on Duke Street and don't use the lift. Anyone attending can film the meeting, but only the participants in the meeting, not the public. And please put your phone on silent. And the meeting, as you know, is being both broadcast and recorded. So item one is apologies for absence.
Thank you. I've had apologies from councillors Gulliver, Highland, Massey and Sizeme.
Thank you.
Can I, councillor Bentley apologises. He's unfortunately turned out poorly this afternoon after looking after Grenshild over the last week.
Oh dear.
I've left him at home.
Send email back, please. Right. Declarations of interest. As you know, if you have any interest in the items of business on the agenda, please declare them now or as soon as you're aware of the interest. Item three is the minutes of the meeting on the 15th of November. Can I please sign those?
Please.
Thank you. Public questions. We have one. Would you like to ask your, come to the microphone and say who you are and then introduce your question? It has been tabled, we've all seen it, so you may not wish to read it out word for word.
We haven't seen it.
Have you not? It's on, it was sent, Dan sent it out. Yes, because they're published on the website 24 hour, in the, yeah, they have to be submitted at least the day before, don't they? Yes, so over to you. Thank you. Please introduce yourself and the question.
Okay, my name's Geoff Jones, I'm a resident of Great Baddo. I have submitted a report to the committee. I'll just go over it, if one or two haven't got it. It should be short and sweet, perhaps not so sweet. I'd like to make the committee aware of ongoing issues that several residents have with the business in Great Baddo. Essex Stays opened for business last summer and soon after, problems started to arise with noise nuisance and antisocial behaviour. At the planning stage, concerns were expressed about how this business would operate. All the accompanying documentation revealed nothing of what their intentions were, other than that it was to be run as a short-term holiday let. Concerns were raised with the council and with Essex Stays themselves about possible noise nuisance antisocial behaviour and antisocial activities. They told us that there would be very little problems, if any. Once opened, it soon became clear that this property had been developed as a go-to party venue. Most disturbing of all is that no-one from Essex Stays is present on the property during guests' stays. Although the venue is unlicensed, guests can bring in alcohol and drink 24/7 if they wish. They have access to loud amplified music. The summer was particularly bad, as guests could spill out from the property into the garden, where the activities were more intrusive to those houses that were in close proximity to their garden. We have to enjoy, we had to enjoy loud music, ruckus sometimes drunken and antisocial behaviour. After several calls to Essex Stays by nearby residents, the owners did very little to curtail the excesses of their guests. Indeed, after several weeks of complaining to them, they started to cut off communications with one or two of us. We turned to the council for help. Multiple complaints from numbers of residents were made. Reports of periods of noise nuisance were reported to them and logs were compiled. Although the past few autumn and winter months have seen a reduction in the amount of noise coming from the venue's garden, we still experience periods of noise nuisance and have called out the out-of-hours noise complaint line. We normally allow residents up to about 40 minutes or so to see if the noise subsides or that somebody can contact Essex Stays to intervene. After that, we report the problem, but it can be a while for a field officer to attend. On the couple of occasions that they have eventually got to the property, the noise has subsided or they have gone back into the property. And we have been told that the incident needs to be witnessed by the attending officer. If that is the case, then what is the point of sending in logs and reports from the residents? We are hoping that the council can be a little more proactive, as now I strongly suspect that if it goes on unchecked, once the summer arrives, the council will be inundated with complaints. So that's my point.
Thank you for asking your question. I'll hand over to my colleague, Cabinet colleague councillor Moore.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Mr. Jones, not only for taking the time to outline in such detail in your letter, but also presenting your question in person. We really do appreciate you attending tonight on behalf of yourself and local residents. I was very concerned to read about the noise nuisance that you and your neighbours have been suffering for some time, and I was not aware of this particular business, nor the conversion of the King's Head pub, as it was formerly known. So once again, thank you for raising it. So to explain to members, the premises in question was previously known as the King's Head pub and beer garden and situated on Molden Road in Great Baddo and does now go by the name of Essex Stays. I understand that Public Health and Protection Services have received complaints of noise from residents about the operations of Essex Stays since it opened last year, and these complaints have been investigated in accordance with UK legislation and our own procedures. It's reasonable to expect that some residents will hear some noise from patrons in a beer garden, as they would have done when it was a pub. However, that noise must not be at unreasonable levels and must take into account the frequency, the time of day and the duration of the noise nuisance. For the council to formally deal with any noise amounting to a statutory nuisance, officers, as you said, must witness noise from the affected residence property to enable them to make a judgement on the acceptability of that. And residents do have access to the council's out-of-hours noise service, which means that officers will visit at weekends and up to 3am if residents contact the service to report noise. Unfortunately, our duty officers' arrival is sometimes delayed, for which I apologise. It can be, for example, if they're already dealing with a prior complaint or if they're investigating somewhere else in the district at the time. You mentioned that you were, forbearance was there for 40, up to 40 minutes to an hour before you contacted Environmental Health. Please do not hesitate to call the minute that that noise begins. If you call straight away as soon as you're disturbed, then it will increase the chances of our officers arriving on site. And I appreciate your tolerance, but please act swiftly and remind your neighbours to do so. We appreciate that the noise has previously caused disturbance to you and your neighbours, and I am very sorry for the stress this must be causing. But the council cannot take any formal action against the business unless officers witness and determine that levels are so unacceptable that normal living is not possible. And to date, for a variety of reasons, including the short duration of the noise incidents and some residents not wanting visits to their properties, I understand that this has not been possible. In accordance with our own procedures for dealing with noise complaints, we do ask residents affected by noise to complete the nuisance log sheets, to detail dates and times that they are disturbed by noise, because these help to further determine the steps and the actions required to be taken by the council. They are particularly important at the outset, at the beginning of any investigation. They also provide important pieces of evidence that can be used by the council to support any formal action that may be taken through the courts. There are no requirements for any licence to be in place where guests bring alcohol to or consume their own alcohol on the premises, or indeed to play music at the property, as would be the case in any holiday let. And I have to say, I find that problematic, and I wondered if we may see more of these party venues springing up. So I would be very happy to take this out of the meeting and consult with our environmental health officers to see what steps we may take to investigate further. The officers from Public Health and Protection Services are in contact with the owners of Essex Stays and have been since the premises opened for bookings. The details of complaints made to the council have been relayed to them for their information and action as they see appropriate. And I'm sorry to hear that you were apparently cut off in your communications with them. The legal implications of any statutory nuisance being witnessed by officers has also been explained to the owners of Essex Stays. The owners have subsequently advised a number of measures they have in place to minimise noise disturbance from the people who let their property, which includes not accepting bookings for certain parties, rules on vacating the garden by 10pm, CCTV in the property so the owners are able to monitor and check what is happening. And our duty officers also have the contact details for the owners of Essex Stays if they feel they do need to contact them. So in conclusion, Mr. Jones, I would ask that residents please continue to contact the council's out-of-hours noise service swiftly when you're disturbed by noise, in order that the officers can visit and make an assessment as quickly as possible. And to assure you that the council is committed to dealing with any unreasonable noise, and if a statutory nuisance is witnessed, we will take appropriate formal action. Thank you once again for your time.
We normally don't allow response, but if it were to be very quick, or do you want to take it up outside of the meeting, would that be easier? If you've got a very quick comeback, I will let you come back very quickly.
Just very quickly, it was, it was a public house, it's not now. It's changed its usage to C3 use, which is holiday lets. So the description of a beer garden is probably inaccurate, because pubs have beer gardens, but normally you wouldn't have a beer garden in a, in a holiday let. Holiday lets are traditionally for families and small groups to come enjoy the area and use it as a base. So they, the, the, it's the modus operandi of, of, of the company that is the problem. And that affects, you know, what's going on with the noise. You know, people that pay £2,000.
Could you just, you're an actor, I just, just, as I said, could you just be very brief?
They're paying £2,000 to rent, rent the property for, for a night, or £3,000 for two nights. They're not going to be, they're not going to be put off by somebody saying they can't drink and make noise at late at night, and that's what's happening.
Okay.
Okay.
If you like.
It's relevant to this.
Okay. Could you just pause, could you just wait for a moment?
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much for, for coming this evening. And councillor, as councillor Moore said, you or your neighbours should feel free to follow that up with the, with the officers. The next section on the agenda is members' questions, and as councillor Social wants to ask something about this, I'll go straight to him.
I am the councillor for the ward which Geoff Jones lives in. In another occasion on noise, I was advised that I could be a witness to a noise, and I'd like to have that confirmed or denied. And secondly, then I would offer, in the, you know, as I delayed officers' response, to come and listen and assess the noise for myself. And if that helped, fine. And if you've advised me that that is now false, or was always false, please, can you advise?
Councillor Moore.
That is a question I can't answer, I'm afraid, and we do not have an officer from Environmental Health. I don't know if, Lorraine, you have any insight, but we will confirm that, councillor. And if that's the case and you can stand as a witness, then I will convey that to you and to members.
Okay, thank you. Right, so yes, other members' questions for items for which the Cabinet is responsible? Who's got a question? Councillor Polter?
Chair, I have a question relating to an item on the agenda, so with your permission, I'll ask it later.
Yes, indeed. Councillor, okay, councillor, yeah, councillor Knight.
It's not on the agenda, is that applicable?
Yes, as I said, if it's something for which the Cabinet is responsible. So yes, carry on.
I occasionally look at the Chelmsford City Council website and just to keep up, keep up to date and find out what's going on. And I came across a safer women's charter. I'm not sure I have the nomenclature correct, but I think you know the one I mean. And you're employing a gender equality consultant, I think, to oversee it. And when I think of a consultant, I think of going to Broomefield and seeing somebody who's probably had several years' training and several years' experience in my particular problem. So I'm in safe hands, I know exactly, you know, that the person has been there, is there on its own merit, and my problem is going to be presumably well looked after and well solved. So in a specific relationship to a safer women's Chelmsford, has the consultant had any prior training? Has the consultant had any experience? Has the consultant got any track record in improving women's safety in other places?
Thank you, councillor. This was a question that was presented and withdrawn at a former meeting that we had. I'm, I'm happy to respond. I don't have a written answer for you, but I can tell you that our community safety team and Spencer Clark himself and indeed Chelmsford Business Improvement District have all had the opportunity to meet with the consultant that you mentioned. Her name is Karen Wybro. She is qualified in that she is a spokesman on behalf of women of all ages, and specifically in, in reaction to the murder of Sarah Everard. She was also instrumental in, in pushing for the upskirting bill and is a resident of Chelmsford and a fierce defender of women and girls' rights. She came to our attention through that work. She is an educator, she's currently working with Essex Police to ensure that their house is also in order with regard to equality and equal treatment and respect for women and girls. I have no hesitation in, in welcoming her to disseminate more information about our women's safety charter, which is a benchmark for Chelmsford. It's, in fact, outside of London, it's the first charter of its kind in the UK. And we are running programmes to educate businesses and indeed some of our own council staff as well, and the taxi trade, in terms of providing safe spaces and an understanding of anyone who feels that they are vulnerable as a woman or girl in our city. I have no hesitation in, in having known her, in recommending her to you and reassuring you that her role is as an education, is educational, and she's running workshops. We now have over 20 businesses signed up to the charter, and she will help transform the landscape very positively for women and girls, and also bring an understanding to men of what is and is not acceptable behaviour.
As, well, I have children who are female and I have grandchildren who are female. So I support the initiative 100%. What I'm questioning is, and asking for an answer, is does the person concerned actually have any training? Does she have any experience? Does she have any track record in actually achieving what she's setting out to, what you're setting out to do? The answer, as far as I see, is no.
Well, and as far as the training programme, this is, this is a new training programme that's being devised with the sort of.
She had any training in training you?
Councillor Knight, this is not, this is not a conversation, this is a question.
If I may.
Well, I think if I may.
I will defer councillor Knight, if you will, Chair, to councillor Marie Goldman, who is also working on this project.
Councillor Knight, I, I actually happen to have qualifications in front of me, so maybe I could read them out to you and maybe that will help to satisfy you. So Ms. Wybro has campaigned on women's safety issues for, or since, as my colleague mentioned, since the tragic murder of Sarah Everard, which was in 2021. She has appeared on national TV and radio to discuss issues such as cyber flashing, and recently had a research paper published on women's safety following work with academics from the University of Essex. She is a keynote speaker on gender equality and a member of the CFA Institute, which is a training body, which I think might answer your question about training. It's a training body which represents the industry gold standard for effective and ethical investment management. She was previously a teacher, again, back to that training, before becoming a local business owner. Ms. Wybro has recently been asked to deliver training for Essex Police with a view to improving their internal culture. Now, at the time that you asked the question, I do not have any, I don't have any, which you withdraw earlier, which you withdraw at the last meeting, and your written question asked about payment, I believe, and the answer that we were given at the time to respond to was that regarding her contribution to the Women's Safety Charter, Ms. Wybro has not received any payment to date for the many hours she has spent in terms of support, advice, training preparation and being the local business face of the project. I think she is eminently qualified to do this, I think she's been doing an excellent job. And if you'd like to take part in any of the training, I would encourage you to sign up. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and this is my last point. Thank you for the.
No, councillor Knight, this isn't a conversation. You need to ask questions, that's why it's called question time, not speech time. Thank you. Right, I think that was it, so other questions are coming up on the agenda. Right, so the first, the next item on the agenda is from councillor Goldman on the local council tax support scheme.
Thank you. So I'm going to keep this very, very brief. This is the local council tax support scheme, which we have all seen before. It is remarkably similar to what you saw last year and indeed the year after. It has not changed, we're not recommending any changes for the benefit of the public. This is a grant essentially that is provided to those who are on the lowest of incomes, and it is provided to help them with payment of their council tax, as the name suggests. We are unable to make any changes to the scheme this year, simply because making it more generous would cost the, the council money, which the council simply does not have. And given the cost of living crisis, it would be unforgivable of us, I think, to make it any less generous. So we're not proposing any changes, and the details are as set out in the paper. Yep.
Any questions on this item? No? Okay, is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. So yes, moving on to two items for a fair at Chelmsford. 7.1, the capital treasury management and investment strategies, councillor Davison.
Thank you. 7.1, the capital treasury management and investment strategies. We've got three strategies here. We are required as a council to approve these strategies every year. They are to be, I think, considered by council next month, so Cabinet's role is to review and send them to council, on the assumption that Cabinet doesn't want to make any changes to what's written down here. There are some technical changes to how we invest our surplus cash compared with last year, but otherwise, they're essentially as before. The treasury management and investment strategies, but not the capital strategy, have already been to the Treasury Management and Investment Subcommittee, who recommend them. Therefore, I will simply pause there in case there are any questions. Otherwise, I will invite Cabinet to agree to forward them to council next month.
Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Right.
Thank you.
Right. The next one might not be quite so quick. Item 7.2, which is the revenue budget.
Right, I will give a brief introduction to this. This is the fourth budget report that I've presented. The first one was relatively straightforward, but the last three have been in difficult circumstances. Covid-19 cast quite a shadow over the 2021 and 22 budgets, and the state of the UK economy makes this year's by far the most difficult, not just for Chelmsford, but for all local authorities. And I want to thank our officers for the excellent work that they do. It's a tribute to their professionalism that they've been able to put this budget together at all. The last year has seen inflation hit over 11%, interest rates more than doubled, incomes not keeping pace with inflation, so as a consequence, we're all poorer than we were, and that's due to the external shock of higher energy prices. And that's causing a cost of living crisis, which is contributing to some of our income on the council falling short of the original budget. That's especially true of the city centre car parks, not Highlands, which is raising income in line with the forecast. Inflation at 10% is frankly brutal for local authorities, any local authority. That's shown in table two in the paper, which, which looks at the inflation pressures compared with last year's budget. It identifies 5.2 million pounds of specific pressures. There has been higher government support than we feared we would get this year. We have increased fees and charges, we agreed that at council last month. We have proposed in this report an increase in council tax, and we have identified significant budget savings. All those added together cannot match anywhere near the scale of the cost rises that we face as a council. Nevertheless, we remain, as a Liberal Democrat administration, ambitious for Chelmsford. We have invested in our fantastic theatres in the current year, we'll see the benefit of that in 2023, 24, and for many years to come. We now need to plan to reach net carbon zero by 2030. We're doing that. We have a responsibility to do it, to protect ourselves and future generations from the damage we've been doing by burning fossil fuels. But it won't be cheap. I provided half a million last year, and I'm putting six and a half million pounds into the capital programme in this budget. And we're investing in other ways, too. We're making our retail market fit for purpose, and I'm proud of the support we've given our market traders, with rents that are the same level now as they were at the end of the last administration in May 2019. We're continuing to invest in our leisure centres, despite the massive increases in the cost of operating them. We're upgrading the lighting and the toilets in our parks, because green spaces are important to our residents and therefore they're important to us, and because women's safety is paramount. And we're refreshing our children's playgrounds. So two years ago, I said we were coping with the shock of Covid-19 by changing the way we replace plant and vehicles. Instead of setting aside 1.7 million each year, we now borrow when we replace these items. That's essentially the same as residents, residents leasing cars or using a personal contract plan to, to have the use of a car, rather than paying in cash upfront. The cost of that is in the budget, it comes out as minimum revenue provision, which I've been asked about before. And I wish, would like to remind you that if the government had provided the full Covid support that they'd originally promised back in 2021, we wouldn't have had, we wouldn't have needed to, to take this measure. I've said many times before that the Liberal, Liberal Democrat administration has continued to deliver sound finance, we always will do. We've balanced this budget, and in doing so, we have to take some unwelcome decisions. One example is the withdrawal of the funding for the Rangers by Essex County Council. The Rangers clean, repair and replace street signs, they tidy vegetation blocking pavements, they do litter picking on major routes, cut back overgrown path edges and that sort of thing. Those are jobs that the city council has been doing, but they're funded by the county council via Essex highways, as it's a county council responsibility. And I frankly don't understand how the county council can decide not to bother with this aspect of highway maintenance any longer. As I said last year, the way the government funds local authorities leaves little choice about increasing council tax by the amount that they decide each year, and this year, that is 3%. And so that's nowhere near enough to offset the inflationary pressures, but it's worth £400,000 and we can't do without it. So I propose an increase of £6.22 a year, that's less than 12p a week, in the city council's share of council tax. That will take the council tax that the city council charges to just over £4 a week. Remember that that pays for emptying bins, for maintaining parks and leisure centres, for street cleaning, for our housing. for street cleaning, for our housing service, for theatres, our award winning museum, public toilets, and many other services. Almost nine pounds in every ten pounds of council tax that we all pay doesn't come to the city council. It's imposed by the county council, Essex Police, the fire service, and for many residents, the parish or town council. So I will assert that we will continue the strong financial management that ensured that we've steered well clear of the problems that some councils up and down the country, Thurrock down the road being a prime example, that have got into financial difficulties, had to be bailed out, have cut services and declared what amounts to bankruptcy. So we're continuing to deliver all the key services our residents rely on, as I think you were confirming last month. So on that basis, if there are any questions, I'll answer them. And I think councillor Polter.
Yes, councillor Polter.
Thank you, chairman. Gonna stay, may I address him?
Off you go. And I'll ask your questions.
Two questions. The, the extra cost of fuel you've budgeted for for twenty three, twenty four is an extra hundred and fifty seven thousand pounds. Is this petrol or diesel? And how is the total cost of fuel calculated specifically by cost per litre? I appreciate you might not have the information to hand. So I'm quite happy to accept a subsequent written response. And the second question, which you probably do know immediately, is how much funding do we currently get from E C C for highway ranges? Thank you.
The answer to the second question is approximately ninety thousand a year. The answer to the first question is that the additional cost of fuel is very significantly more than the figure that you quoted there. Councillor Robinson may have the precise figure at his fingertips. It is very significantly more. What I do have is if you look at the waste and garden composting line that's in the budget papers, that has gone up from one point nine million to two point three million. Fuel is a hundred and seventy four thousand pounds of that increase. And there's fuel in a very significant number of other lines as well. It will be mainly diesel or the, the, the green equivalent of diesel, the H V O fuel.
Yes, I was just gonna, that was the, that's the key point. The hundred and fifty seven, which is mentioned in table six, is the extra cost of switching to a low carbon fuel. And it's not, that's actually the additional cost. The total additional fuel cost for the authorities in the region of one and a half million, I think.
That's the gas and electricity.
Sorry, Phil. Sorry, Phil Reeves. Yeah, he'll get the answer.
Thank you, Chair. There's three hundred thousand additional put in for fuel for next year, plus a hundred and fifty seven thousand for the H V O fuel. So three hundred thousand is the additional cost of fuel that we put in, which is effectively inflation. We're hoping that that cost will come down over the next few years, and we've seen some evidence that prices have softened on that. So that's vehicle fuel.
Yes, that's the vehicle fuel. Other fuel across the authority for heating and life and so on is significantly more.
I should have been clear. It was vehicle fuel that I was referring to. The source is background note five on page seventeen, appendix one of item seven point two.
The hundred and fifty seven is the H V O additional cost, if that's the figure you're referring to, isn't it?
Is that, do we know how much that works out per litre?
I can find out for you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
It's the cost of cutting pollution. Councillor Steele.
Thank you. Mine's a fairly straightforward question. If I can take you to page one oh six of the agenda. There is a negative charges to SEP minus one nine five. And I just wondered, what is that? A negative charge to me says money coming our way. Is that right? And how, how is it? What's it for?
Phil will answer that.
The, the SEP is run by our officers, but it's a separate account. So what happens is that the officer time is charged to SEP. So effectively, it's shown as a hundred and ninety five thousand pounds of income coming in for the work that they do on behalf of SEP. So if I work for SEP, say, say I, I spend an hour on the accounts for SEP, I charge SEP for that time, and therefore it shows as income coming in, that hundred and ninety five thousand.
Right, okay. Is, is that the standard amount? Is that the same amount as this year, a hundred and ninety K? It's not changed?
It's moved a little bit. What we do is we ask officers for allocations, in other words, how they spend their time. And therefore they identify how much they plan to spend on the work for SEP. And we charge SEP the appropriate amount. So we do a cost allocation.
So it's a charge for actual, it varies up to the actual cost?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. As you guessed, we're not going to go through it all in masses of detail tonight. We'll save that up for next month. And councillor Sisley, he's not here as ever, he's got all the answers. So that I will not pursue hundreds and hundreds of questions, alternative budgets or anything else this evening, you'll be pleased to know. And we do understand, all of us, of course, I mean, we're all paying for fuel or whatever it happens to be. So there's nothing in here in costs that surprised me anyway at all, really. I mean, all the costs that are going up are the ones you'd expect to go up. And all the income that's going down, you would expect to go down, car parking in particular, really. Apparently people are all sort of coming for different reasons to car parks or not parking now and just dropping cars, people off in the middle and going away again and so on, rather than spending a couple of thousand pound a year and going up to London. And there's nothing we as a council can do to force them to come and park in our car parks. And I know, I know you've got a strategy on car parks and reducing numbers and things. Yeah, there's, there's a logic in that if it produces subsequent capital receipts, really. Again, that's something to discuss in, in the future, really. So, yeah, I mean, I, you could argue there's a few sort of things in here. You seem to be relying on the inland revenue or H M R C, I should call it, sorry, to give you a windfall. And now, of course, it's very easy to make mistakes with H M R C, I think. Some people seem to be doing that at the moment. And so that with, with a bit of luck, they'll, they'll be working for us as opposed to against us.
I mean, people who used to be chancellor.
I can't imagine what you're talking about, really. But, but yeah, it's, having got them to persuade them not to charge my wife a penalty for being dead and not putting something in by the end of this month, yeah, I, I understand the difficulty. But, but no, from the point of view of, of major things, yeah, we've got some comments on capital expenditure and things that you probably would expect, and I will save those for another day. So, thank you.
In this, in that case, I think I simply need to move that we recommend the budget report to council and approve the delegation set out in the, oh, sorry.
Sorry, councillor Roberts.
Sorry, I was hiding. I was so far away.
Well, I was kind of working my way down this way.
I listened to the report and I, I've been concerned, I'm very concerned about this highway ranges, the fact that Essex County Council Conservatives have decided to cancel something that's very essential. If you look, as I have, at the list that's published every month on the work that these people do around the district, has a lot of parish councils, town centre work that's done by the, the Rangers, which is currently, as I understand, paid for by Essex County Council. It remains a concern, the biggest concern is, I understand that parish councils and like are not allowed to do highway work. It's outside the rules and remit. So who is going to do that? And I also wonder whether the city council is allowed to do highway work under the regulations if they're not the highway authority. So there is a great concern that this work will just disappear and we'll end up with major problems all around the district of which this council will get the blame. And I think, you know, it's something that I'm looking into and I will hopefully talk to the one five one officer about the issue because I do believe that we need to, we should have needed to consult with parishes and others to see whether they could help us bear the cost. But that has not happened. We haven't got the time to do that. And I am greatly concerned. So it may be something that'll come up next month. Thank you.
We share councillor Roberts' concern about the decision by the county council. I've already covered that in what I've said already, that I find it very difficult to believe that they can simply decide that they're not going to comply with a statutory obligation to, to keep the highways clear. So that is very puzzling, but I'm happy to have a further conversation with councillor Roberts as and when.
Councillor Polter's thought of another question.
Just rising out of that question. Are we able to use SIL money for fund highway ranges?
No.
It's the clue is in the letter C.
SIL money is capital and the highway ranges cost its revenue.
Okay, no more questions? No, okay. And I think it's just worth highlighting the fact that in terms of the overall financial picture, we've, we were facing a deficit of seven point nine million pounds about months, six weeks ago, although that has reduced to six point nine million now. And that is the scale of, of what we have had to remove from this budget because of rampant inflation. And that has not been easy. It is, it's been very, very tough. We've had to reduce spending significantly, nearly four million pounds worth of reduced spending in order to fill that budget gap of six point eight million pounds, almost exclusively due to inflation. That's, that's difficult. But as councillor Davison says, we are still able to introduce some new projects to upgrade facilities at the athletic centre, the car parks, lighting, some parks lighting, and some other items which will continue to make our city greener and safer. So I'm proud of what we've been able to do in really, really difficult circumstances. And I hope Cabinet will recommend the budget to council. That's agreed? Thank you. Right, so the next chunky item is sustainable development. Councillor McCrawley to present the master plan on the garden community.
Thank you very much, Chair. Perhaps this is something which we can be a bit more enthusiastic about because it's a, a good news story. So I'm very pleased to present this report to Cabinet. It's a very significant milestone in the delivery of what is going to be an exemplar, high quality and comprehensively planned development. The master plan is the culmination of some two years just over of quite extraordinary work by our spatial planning team, supported by their colleagues in planning and indeed across the council's entire organisation. But I must also acknowledge the role of the consortium partners. And that's Countryside L and Q, Tymon Land and Hayley Developments, who have embraced this council's sustainable development agenda as elucidated in our Chelmsford airplan and with great enthusiasm. Indeed, they themselves recognise that this has to be the way if we are going to address the challenges of the climate and ecological emergency that we all face. Chair, you and I, and indeed the chief executive, have sat on the Garden Community Delivery Board for the last three years to ensure that our objectives and aspirations are being met within the timeframe set. And I do acknowledge the great support that we've had from Homes England and Essex County Council planners in getting to this stage. The report is before you, together with the actual master plan included in all the appendices. But I would like to give some background if, and if I may, I'll refer to the, the points raised at the December Policy Board a little later. So if I may just highlight some of the, the background to this. So this will be delivered over a twenty year period. I mentioned Homes England. They granted a garden community status back in the summer of two thousand and nineteen. And the development itself has been designed to meet the Garden City Principles, which is set out by the Town and Country Planning Association. And I think, as we all know, this site was allocated as strategic growth site six in the, in the adopted local plan. And there will be some three thousand new homes of mixed size and type, particularly to include affordable housing and other specialist residential accommodation. Eventually, over the life of the development, it will be five and a half thousand new homes, but it's three thousand for the, up until the current plan period in two thousand and thirty six. So we do include some forty five thousand square meters of floor space in a new office and business park. And we are obliged to provide a site for travelling show people for nine service plots. And in accordance with our ambitions to provide infrastructure before the development, where possible, we all know about the phase one of the North East Bypass, which is underway. The radial distributor route, road two, that is, we've already got R D R one. That will also provide vehicular access across the more the north of the site from Essex Regiment Way to the bypass. We have neighbourhood centre, new secondary school to primary schools, standalone early years and children, nursery, provision of community space, significant new multifunctional green infrastructure. There's an awful lot, and for those of you who have actually read the master plan, which is a very, very lengthy document, as it needs to be, there's an awful lot more detail in there. It, the master plan itself does comprise three core documents. So we have the development framework document, we have the infrastructure delivery plan, and we have the planning framework agreement. And all of these will be worked on over the coming months. I could say an awful lot more, but one wonders how much detail I should go into because the report is before you, together with all the appendices. I will just touch on, if I may, the policy board recommendations, which in particular raised points about the active travel network. That's been addressed and that is referred to within the document. And the paragraphs are for, there for you to see. The other one was the site wide design principles. These will all be determined at outline planning application stage, section one oh six agreements and so on. Domsey Lane access arrangements, there were concerns from some of the residents. They're being currently addressed as far as is possible, and they will have further opportunities at the outline application stage. And the principles of community stewardship arrangements, again, that's still work in progress, and it will be decided by the consortium and the, the new parish councils and so on will be involved and other stakeholders and so on. So that work will be ongoing. The design principles, again, they will be worked on at the outline application stages. What else can I say? The infrastructure developer, delivery plan, again, that's something which will be determined at outline application stage. We need to establish a baseline position. This is included in the recommendation. And what that means is that we have a baseline position. But as the negotiations carry on and more detail is, comes forward, then we'll be able to tailor that according to the requirements of the infrastructure. So Chairman, it's, Chair, it's a very exciting opportunity for this council to have this exemplar development, which will go a very long way to meeting housing needs and the requirements in the local plan with affordable housing. And we've got very high levels of green. green infrastructure, blue infrastructure. So I would like to recommend the cabinet to approve the recommendations as are set out in the covering paper. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Councillor Steele?
Thank you, just a couple of questions. I think on page one to four it says that talks about open spaces should be within the control of the councils. When you say councils, does that mean the parish councils or City Council? And is this kind of move towards open spaces being managed and maintained by the council as opposed to some sort of private arrangement?
This will have to be determined by agreement between the consortium and all the other partners involved. It is the ambition of this council to manage the strategic open space, if I describe it in that way. But as you no doubt are aware, we can't insist on maintaining open space within new developments, but we can come to agreements and it will be the new parish council who will be very much involved in all of this.
Thank you. Second question was two point two, I think talks about a link, sustainable travel link to Broomfield Hospital. How is that developing and is there a route in mind?
Well, it is, I mean, I guess as the crow flies would be ideal, but obviously we will have to consider the crossing points on Essex Regiment Way, which is going to be quite crucial. There is the existing Pegasus Crossing there. We're not at that final sort of stage of defining an actual route, but that is obviously an ambition that we have because clearly people will want to get across to Broomfield as sustainably as possible. We do have the park and ride there, whether there's further opportunities there with the hospital as they did provide shuttle service before, but I don't know whether Mr Potter might have a bit more detail on that.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair. As councillor McCrory has just outlined, there are a number of routes that we are looking at the moment. Obviously Mill Lane is one route that's there at the moment. Mill Lane is a route that's there at the moment, the route also to Croxted Mill. So we are looking at two opportunities there of using the existing rights of way, but also within the master plan as part of this renegotiation from Policy Board, we've asked them to put some aspirational routes in as well to enable us to look at more direct routes and to look at work with the County Council to provide more direct routes as and when the opportunities arise. So off-site connections across the valley to connect Broomfield Hospital with the new Garden Community is going to be, you know, really important to get this modal shift to a sixty per cent modal shift, which is one of the targets of the Garden Community. So off-site active travel routes is going to be key to make this really sustainable.
And just to be a hundred per cent clear, we're not talking about private car, we're talking about sustainable modes of transport. I didn't want anybody to get the wrong impression. Any other questions? I don't think we should miss the opportunity to underline what a significant departure this intended to be from the past, from what has gone before. We want this to be as just been said, a genuinely sustainable neighbourhood where you can get around within fifteen minutes to all the key things you likely to want to do, work, shopping, education, community facilities and so on. We want to ensure there is as many jobs created in the Garden Community as there are new homes, and so that will be better than the rest of the local plan, we want to look at that in the local plan review. And I've already registered this interest, but you know I'm a member of the Shadow Community Council and nominated by this council, and they, the Shadow Council is keen, as councillor McCrory was saying, to be part of that stewardship process that was just being mentioned. And so Mr Potter has created, we've created a new team headed up by Karen Short, who's specifically responsible for pushing this forward, and it's a key part of our ambition that the Garden Community Council should be a key part of that public open space management going forwards. And we are, as councillor McCrory said, keen to reduce to as low as possible any service charges that the residents will have to pay in future, because we don't like the double taxation that that feels like. And I'm pleased to say that's something that councillor Waggland from the County Council agrees with us on. And also, we want, as you know, we want to push as fast as we possibly can towards the government's future home standards of low or zero carbon homes, and we are pushing the consortium to get there as quickly as possible. So this is designed to be different, it's designed to be better and it's designed to reflect new ways of living and working, particularly post-COVID as people are working more from home. So we want to see things like pop-up offices and things like that in the four village centres that we're designing. And it will be possible to get around by sustainable modes of transport, much more easily than the private car. So this is something different, and something I'm very proud of. As councillor McCrory says, we've been working on this for the last three and a bit years, and this master plan is an important step in that process. So I hope cabinet will agree. Thank you. Does that agree? Thank you. Right, so the next one is a relatively small item, I think. So the memorandum of understanding between North Essex councils, the proposition is that us and the other seven districts and the County Council enter into a memorandum of understanding just to express our desire to work more closely together. It's not committing us to anything at the moment, it doesn't concede any powers to this strategic body, it's a consultation forum, and any decisions could only happen if all of the constituent authorities agree to make them happen. But it is a framework by which we agree to have discussions with our neighbours. So the four districts and two unitaries in the south of the county have been functioning as the Association of South Essex Local Authorities over the last three and a half years, and this is for the rest of the county to work more closely together. So at the moment, as I say, it's just a memorandum of understanding, which is really about talking more to each other when we might be able to achieve things better by working with our neighbours rather than trying to go it alone. Any questions? No? Is it agreed that I should sign the MOU on behalf of the council?
Agreed.
Thank you. Right, there is no urgent business, I think? No? And the reports to council?
Six and seven.
Six and seven. And I don't think there's anything else tonight, so thank you very much for your attendance at seven fifty-eight. Thank you very much.